Today is Monday, October 7th, 2019. It is 6:05 PM and we are at the John Zahn Center at 35 Pleasant Street in Greenfield, Massachusetts. This is a special meeting of the Greenfield School Committee. Can we have a roll call, please?
Member Warren?
Here.
Member Karen?
Here.
Member Johnson?
Here.
Member Hollins?
Here.
Mayor Martin?
Here.
Member Nunes?
Here.
And myself, Susan Ekstrom. We have a quorum.
Thank you, Secretary Ekstrom. Are there any members of the public that are here to comment today? Okay, I see three hands, four hands. Okay, great. So if you could just come up to the mic up here at this table, please do check in with Susan Farber, our secretary, and make sure that she has your name and information recorded for the record. When you come up to the mic, if you could just turn the mic on, even though it's not going to broadcast to the room, try to speak loudly and clearly to everyone. And you will have three minutes.
And just so I'm going to put my timer on and you'll hear the alarm because I am uncomfortable interrupting people when they're making good points. So it's the timer, it's not you, it's not me.
All right, great.
Starting with Susan Voss, followed by Tara Cludier.
Super. So if you could just press the mic until just one time, it should turn green on the bottom. There we go. Thank you.
All right. I am Susan Voss. I live at 158 Log Plain Road in Greenfield. I work at the Academy of Early Learning in Greenfield. And I am also the union representative for Unit C, for the employees of Greenfield. We began negotiations on our contract in January and we reached a tentative agreement in August. Both sides negotiated fairly and respectfully. And we thank you, those who were on the committee. You guys made it a lot easier than it would have been otherwise. The biggest issue in our contract is money. We are the lowest-paid IAs, PAREs, whatever you want to call us, in the area. That means that IAs don't want to work in this district. You can make a lot more money working somewhere else. And if they're offered more money somewhere else, they're going to leave. Substitutes don't like to come to Greenfield if there are other jobs available because they're going to make more money and everybody's on the same system so they can see where the openings are. As a city and the county seat, we should be striving to become a destination for education. Greenfield has this potential. But it isn't going to happen if the pay scale is not increased. If you don't put the money into the schools, you're not going to attract quality people to work in the schools and the schools are not going to be the quality that they can be. Most of the IAs with whom I work have second jobs. If they were to leave the school system and work their second job full-time, they could make a lot more money. But they're here for the kids. We do what we do because we love the kids, we love teaching, and we love being here. I want, while you're deliberating on this, to think of the kids. We talk a lot about money and we talk a lot about the different people that are going to be affected by this. Think about the kids. This is the thing. This is why we're here. This is why we do what we do. So think about the kids and I ask that you ratify this contract. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. My name's Tara Cludier. I am a teacher at Greenfield High School and I'm also the vice president of the GEA. Our IAs, many of them at this time make less than minimum wage and when the minimum wage goes up, all of them will make less than minimum wage. Our schools cannot function without them. And yet, they live below the poverty level. This contract was negotiated and agreed upon in good faith at the beginning of August. It is now October. I ask you to please vote and ratify this contract to pay our valuable workers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Doug Zellwijn, followed by Tori Crozier.
Good evening. Doug Zellwijn, 38 Forest Avenue in Greenfield. I, like the others in the room, I think, are here to encourage you to ratify the contract that has been agreed upon. And I'm going to echo much of what has already been said, but I want to add to it that most of the people that the IAs work with are people who are most vulnerable in our school districts. There are kids with special needs, there are kids who have second language issues or other learning issues, and the relationships that they have with the instructional assistants are crucial to their success. The school districts generally are not set up to support kids who have special needs. If you can go through at the normal pace, things work a lot more smoothly. But when you have special needs, you need extra attention, you need extra support. And many of the people who provide that support are IAs. And when you underpay them, it means that, as was mentioned earlier, they may go elsewhere. When you promise them that they will be getting a raise and then the raise doesn't come through, they may regret the decision to stay. They've stayed out of loyalty to the kids, to the district, because they care. And when they're jacked around, it doesn't serve them, it doesn't serve the kids, and it endangers the relationship they have with the students who are depending on them. And so we're talking about money, but we're also talking about the lives of the most vulnerable children in Greenfield. And so ratifying this contract, giving them some stability and support, is crucial to the children, to those people who are working in IA positions, and to the entire district. And so I don't know what happened, that there was an agreement and now the money seems to be elsewhere or not there. I have no idea what happened, but it's crucial that this is ratified and ratified tonight. Thank you.
I think it's all set.
It's all set?
Yeah. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Tori Crozier. I am a one-on-one IA at the Discovery School at Four Corners. This is only my second year here and forgive me, this is my first school council meeting. I haven't paid much attention to the goings-on, I'll admit. I can only speak to my personal experience with the district thus far. And my personal experience is that I am working three jobs to support only me because I cannot support myself on this salary alone. And it is stressful and taxing to my physical and mental health. And still, I consider myself lucky because I am home alone and I don't have children or parents to depend on me. This contract needs to be ratified. We were promised this raise. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public that would like to speak before we close public comment?
Do I have to do anything here?
I think you're all set. Thank you.
All right. Hello, I'm Luke Martin. I live at 62 Haywood Street and I'm a teacher at Greenfield High School. I'm also the treasurer, excuse me, of the union, the Greenfield Education Association. I thought maybe it'd be worth getting to know some of the people here in the audience tonight. And I was thinking maybe you could stand if you've ever provided one-on-one or classroom support to someone with academic challenges. To someone with social or emotional challenges? Okay? Maybe stand if you've provided pencils, paper, basic supplies to students who need them? Provided food to students who need them? Okay? Substituted for a teacher who was out? Okay? Ran copies for a frantic teacher like myself who might have needed some extra copies? Okay? Worked several jobs to make ends meet? Okay? These are probably some of the most important employees we have, not just in the school district, but in the town. And as you are aware, some of them make less than minimum wage in Massachusetts under this current, or actually expired, contract. And just to make that very shamefully clear what that means, in Greenfield High School, some of the students can leave at 2:10 and go wash dishes at a fast-food restaurant and make more than the adults who support them in school. It is embarrassing and shameful that that is true in our school district. We have negotiated, not me personally, I'm not part of that negotiating unit, but they have negotiated and settled in good faith with you folks in a very good process and they have ratified it unanimously. Please do the right thing and ratify this contract for some of the most important people that you employ in this entire town. Thank you.
Is there anyone else from the public? Okay. Can I get one final count of folks that may like to speak? Okay, just the two of you? Super. Okay, so I saw you first, if you want to come along, and then you can be next. Thank you. And one more over here?
Please stop by so I can get your name on your way up.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Cassandra Walker. I live at 2 Traver Court here in Greenfield. I have been involved in different volunteer positions within the school system. My daughter had an IEP, so I was familiar with that system and process. My point is we need strong schools. Nobody's going to argue that. And there's been good examples about how IAs and support staff are important for the schools. But I want to go for a slight step to the side. Schools are a point that draw people to any locality. You have to have strong schools. Families will move in if they find that that's going to be a school system where their kids will thrive. And more families can equal more money. So the system starts to pay for itself. But you've got to do that loss leader first. It's a gamble, it's hard, but get the schools going and the families will come. It's one of the reasons I stayed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Anna Walker. I work as a one-on-one in the middle school and I also do classroom teaching in the middle school. If this isn't ratified, I'm going to have to put in my resignation because this is the second month in a row that my husband and I are not able to make rent. I do not make enough money to support. My paycheck after two weeks is about comparable, if I work extra hours, to his one-week paycheck. And he is a production line worker putting coffee in bags. He doesn't need to make more money than me. So I would love it if we could ratify this because we were promised it and I signed on for my second year here because of the ratified contract that was tentative that I saw over the summer. And I need it to become true or I'm going to have to leave. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello.
Hi.
I'm Jean Squires. I live at 15 Abbott Street. And so I went home and I've been, you know, I just moved to Greenfield. I was working, supporting adults. I was being paid $6 more an hour. And I had much cheaper rent at my last place. So I've been whittling down my contributions and my fun. And I started to notice that I'm actually making much less than I'm spending. So I wrote down all the things. I have $25 in donations and I have $25 for, like, movies. And then I have car insurance, health insurance, food. I was getting EBT over the summer, but that just cut out because I make just too much. And I share a house with three other people. I pay $5.40 in rent, which is a really good deal here. And I pay $50 for my phone, so that's not that much. And I still netted $13 less than I made for paying for all those things. So I'm making much less than I've made as an adult. And I, I mean, I value mental health and balance of work and work and life, right? So I don't think it's sustainable without the raise, and I think you can see that. But just to break it down, and that's me as one person, sharing a house with an 80-year-old, a 70-year-old, and a 50-year-old. So it's not optimal, right? And that's it. I think that's it. But I really see incredibly dedicated people around me all day. It's amazing. And I changed four diapers today, you know? And I got ganked and I'm sure that there's been all kinds of physical things happening to the folks behind me as well. So ratified. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other final public comments? Okay. Seeing none, we will close the public comment period. It is 6:23 PM. I want to thank everyone who's come out tonight to give us their input. It's very important for us to hear from you and thank you very much for coming tonight. We have three main things on the agenda. One is a short business item that I hope that we can take care of quickly. And then we have our main public session item, which is to talk a little bit about the Contract Stabilization Fund and funding school department collective bargaining contracts in general. The committee wanted to have a public session meeting to have a collaborative conversation about this. It came to our attention that the balance for the Contract Stabilization account was very low a couple weeks ago and it may be at zero now. And with that in mind, we wanted to have this conversation. We sent an invitation, specifically at the request of the committee, we sent an invitation to Councilor Wheeler, who is here with us this evening. He is the chair of Ways and Means. We also sent an invitation to Director Liz Gilman, who is the finance director for the city, and President Rudy Reno. President Reno and Director Gilman were unfortunately not able to make it this evening. However, Director Gilman has had a preliminary conversation with myself and the superintendent and some other folks and has provided some information to the committee. Of course, Mayor Martin is a member of our committee and therefore did not receive a specific, separate invitation as a member of our committee. He is here at the table. Then we will enter into executive session. So executive session, of course, is just that. It is a private session. Unfortunately, we'll likely go to the conference room that's on the other side of the building. And that executive session may last for quite some time, I'm not sure. We do have a couple other things to talk about in that executive session. There is a chance we may come back to public session to take a public vote. It is unclear at this time. So with that in mind, we'll start with our first agenda item, which is to... Yes, Member Ward?
Can I take a couple of seconds to address what we...
Um...
I'd like...
The thing is that we can't really deliberate yet in public session about the contract, so it's a little difficult. So if you want to make a quick, very quick response...
All right, well, just slap me if I say something wrong. Stop me. Somebody will be able to do that, right?
Sure.
So I really, 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 really love to see everybody here and the support that you clearly have amongst yourselves. And I am certain that you have our support as well. I know that. I've worked with these people for four years, going on four years, and there's no question that you're not paid enough money. That's never been in doubt. You want, though, as citizens of the community, for us to find a responsible way to get that money. No? Just...I mean, you do want a responsible way for us to fund...
Let's wrap up, Member Ward. It's really, the public comment's really a time for us to hear from the public and unfortunately, it is nice to have a dialogue, but we can't have that this evening, so...
Well, thank you for everybody that took the courage to come up and speak and thank you, everybody, for being here.
Thank you. Okay. So our first agenda item is to appoint an interim director of people's services. This was a late addition to the agenda. You all received notification about it. Did you want to speak to this agenda item quickly? Okay, thank you, Superintendent.
I did. This is a brief agenda item before the committee tonight. Our current director of people's services has a happy occasion, which is he's currently out on a family leave. But there are a number of important matters that occur on a day-to-day basis. And in his absence, I'm recommending to the committee that we appoint the very able Dr. Dickinson, who's been an assistant director here with the Greenfield Public Schools. She's entering her seventh year with the Greenfield Public Schools. She's familiar with our students and our staff. She works with our families. And appointing her as interim for roughly the two-week period that the current permanent director is on leave allows her to step in and provide critical services and be empowered to make decisions on behalf of the district. That could put us in noncompliance if somebody was not in the role to be able to continue providing services. So I do, this is consistent with what the district has done in the past when other administrators are on leave. And I would ask that the committee take a vote this evening so that we can move her into a temporary interim role to continue our services to the students and families of our district.
Thank you, Superintendent. And my understanding is that the appropriate motion here is to direct the superintendent to engage in contract negotiations with Dr. Dickinson to serve as interim director of people's services.
So moved.
Thank you, Member Johnson. Is there a second? Second by Member Ward. Any deliberation on this? Yes, Member Ekstrom?
Do we know what an end date is, so we have a better idea?
Yes, sorry, I was going to note that. Mr. Holloway is expected back at the end of next week, so anticipated end date of October
Okay. Yes, Mayor Martin?
Will that end date be included in the motion?
I would just note that it's an anticipated end date, so if Mr. Holloway gave notice for any reason of a different return date to the district, but currently, as best as I know, he's expected back in district the following Monday, the 21st.
How have we made adjustments in the contract of Dr. Dickinson?
We will discuss that in executive session.
But I can note that no adjustments have been made before coming to the committee.
So that would be a public contract?
Mayor, it would be public once ratified and because I need a vote of the committee to enter into negotiations, it would become public after it was executed.
So then the motion to make the appointment is without any salary increase and without any conditions to the contract?
If the committee wished to enter more specific information, that could be done in executive session. You'll note that on the agenda, there's an exception allowable for executive session for individual contracts. If necessary, the committee could offer additional stipulations on that, but that would be appropriate for executive session.
The language of the motion is not to appoint. The language of the motion is to engage in contract negotiation for this particular interim position. Thank you. Any further conversation? Yes, Member Ward?
So we're going to enter into contract negotiations with this person that's going to be, what, on staff for a couple of weeks?
Yes, it's our authority to approve any changes to the contract, any stipends, anything like that. And so it's really a formality to go through it in this way. So we will essentially vote here to allow the superintendent to engage in a conversation with Dr. Dickinson. And then later on this evening, we're going to enter into executive session. There are some details that are prepared for us in advance.
We do have an assistant to the director, correct?
Dr. Dickinson is the assistant director. So we would just be asking her to add additional duties and essentially offer an additional stipend to do this work for a roughly two-week period in addition.
That's not part of what she would do in his absence anyways?
Right, there are certain things that the director would have to do or that she would be able to step in if it were emergency, kind of a matter that couldn't wait till his return.
It's more of a formality in respecting the committee's authority, too. Okay. Are we ready? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed or abstained? Okay, I think that was unanimous. Thank you. Thank you, everyone. So we will see that in executive session this evening. So we will move on to our second item, which is the main public agenda item, to have a conversation about Contract Stabilization Fund and funding school department collective bargaining contracts. As I mentioned earlier, it came to the attention of the committee that the Contract Stabilization account, which has historically been the source of funding for collective bargaining agreements first year, is empty. And so there is a need to have a conversation about process related to funding any collective bargaining agreements. We are in negotiations right now, of course, with Unit C, Unit A, and we have a few other contracts that will be coming just around the corner. The committee did receive some information about the contract balances. I do have that printed out if you'd like to have it. And again, we did invite Councilor Wheeler here to participate as desired and also just to be aware of what is going on. Superintendent, did you want to add anything to that?
Not yet.
Yes, Member Hollins?
Just to clarify, these are city accounts.
These are city accounts, yes. Yes, absolutely. So there is not necessarily a motion to be made. This is here at the request of the committee to have this conversation. Mayor Martin, did you want to make any comments about process or any recommendations?
At this meeting, I haven't heard any process or recommendations, but I will comment when that happens. when that happens.
All right. I mean, at this time, you know, I... Yes, go ahead.
I think one question that I think would be really helpful, essentially the question that we're looking to address here, is the school department has been operating with a past practice of using the Contract Stabilization Account to settle the first year of contracts. The mayor has been a real champion of this fund, and I think it's had a really positive impact in a number of ways. The mayor has come and spoken before teachers and paraprofessionals in the past, and the presence of this fund has meant that people can look forward to working here and negotiating successor contracts, and they can sort of envision the future with some security. The same Contract Stabilization Fund has also been used for other city employees, DPW, police, fire, SSEA, and obviously, you know, it's a collective pool. I think the question becomes if that Contract Stabilization Fund is at or near zero, what is the city's recommended process for not just school department but city employees? There are avenues that one could imagine being available, such as using the contracts... I'm sorry, the General Stabilization Fund, which would require a two-thirds vote of council. But I think it's unclear at this point what the city's recommended course of action is in order to be good financial stewards and for the committee to really understand how to proceed in good faith in a general way, not specific to any particular unit, but just to continue moving forward in a way that has the city's best financial interest in mind, which would look like ensuring positive bond ratings and so forth, as well as the equity and parity of being able to continue to fund contracts that are coming, recognizing that a number of city contracts have been settled. And what does that mean for particularly school department contracts that are still coming up? So I think those are sort of the public... Excuse me, the public conversations that we're hoping to get clarity rather than any specific, you know, unit discussion tonight, just what is the city looking for as a process? Thank you.
Yes, Mayor Martin? Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Superintendent. I think it's beneficial for all of us to put some perspective to the issue. The Contract Stabilization Fund was started by me in 2012. The purpose of that fund was to show all the collective bargaining units that we would have funds available for negotiations. Money was added every year to that fund and used as negotiations or contracts were concluded. This year, or rather, this year, fiscal year '20 and closing of fiscal year '19, our process, which was continuous until this year, we brought to the council the financial orders necessary to refill, replenish, if you will, the Contract Stabilization Fund. There was no quorum on July 15th. That process didn't happen. The result of that deadline period was that the recap will have to take place because we don't have the end-of-the-year close and we weren't transferring the money that we knew we had into different accounts. Primarily, $200,000 was going to contract stabilization. So now we have, I think it's $458 in stabilization. We have a number of other stabilization accounts that are all used for different aspects of city spending and city guarantees. Moving from that to this contract, the IAs or the PERS, the school committee needs to approve a tentative agreement is just that. Once the negotiators meet, discuss options, put together all the pluses and minuses, and come to a negotiated mutually agreed tentative agreement, it comes to the collective bargaining unit for ratification and to the school committee for approval. Once that contract is approved, it goes to the city council for funding. The council provides the funds. The school committee and the mayor provide the content of the documents. So we don't have an identified source of funds, which I think brings us to the meeting tonight, is to try to find that source of funds. So we have, as the superintendent noted earlier, $1.9 million in general stabilization. Those funds are for general issues across the city. Certainly, they can be used for contracts. They can be used for purchases. They can be used for whatever the city council agrees to upon recommendations from the school committee and/or the mayor. So that's a possibility. But in the meantime, it's important for the city to recognize two things. One, have we made an honest attempt to raise the wages of every employee in Greenfield? In some part, we have, in other parts, we haven't. And you're the prime example of an area that still has employees working for less than minimum wage. Now, the increasing the value of the employees in IAs are very similar to what we discussed when we did the cafeteria contract, which is now concluded. It was presented to the council with a tentative approval, I'm sorry, to the school committee with a tentative approval. I, for one, disagreed with it. I didn't think it was priced well. It didn't bring enough people above minimum wage, and it didn't guarantee over the life of the contract that there was going to be accelerated wages that would keep track with state law, which is increasing minimum wage on an annual basis. So we sent it back. The superintendent and the chair went back to the cafeteria people, negotiating team, and made those changes. That was subsequently approved by the school committee, moved to the city council, which approved it, and the funds identified from the contractual stabilization, which had some money in there at that time. So I guess the point I'm making is that we need to understand how this increase is going to... I don't believe this overlaps into executive session since we're not negotiating. How this overlaps into state law, which is automatically increasing the minimum wage so that everyone is always on minimum wage or better, and making those appropriate calculations of cost over time. I would want to look at a process I think is very important. We have a school committee-approved budget by the city council. That is the approved allocation of funds that the school department can spend. The school committee has not adopted that approved budget yet, and it's important to all of us to have an approved budget to be expending funds from the city coffers. We're going into, coming into six months. It's more and more difficult to follow a budget... Let me rephrase that. It's more and more difficult to change budget if you're overspending an approved budget. So I think that should be the number-one conversation, is approve the school committee budget to what we have. If the $19.97 million budget is something the school committee is going to approve, they need to come up with $600,000 more dollars, maybe $630,000. If you've identified, the school committee and the business manager have identified where that $630,000 is coming from, then we know we don't have it in certain accounts within the school department existing today. Those departments, those accounts are showing several hundreds of thousands of dollars. We need to know the source of funds. Are they going to be available on June 30th, 2020, which is the end of this FY '20 budget? Or if they're going to be used for wages and contractual salaries and be a contributor, partner with the city council to appropriate the funds for your contract, the IA contract? We need to know those answers. So we need to also review the budget. So the budget includes $121,000 for Green River School. If that budget is still there, and $101,000 for Green River School, we need to move that somewhere else because Green River School is not open. There should be no expenses there. If there's been an approved program that I don't know about or somebody else does know about, then that has to be reviewed. And where's it going to be? And how is it impacting that other site if it's going to be at some other site? So we also have $662,300 in a revolving special student tuition account. That money needs to... Is that going to be put into the operating budget at some point during this fiscal year? If so, then what happens to the replacement of the $662,000 in the operating budget that's approved by the school committee? Additionally, the SPED IDA grant of $586,221 awarded for FY '20, is that in the budget? Is that going to be used?
So, Mayor?
Yes?
We will actually be discussing the FY '20 budget at our next meeting, which, by the way, is on the 21st. We've already had discussion on the FY '20 budget, and all of this is relevant. I do want to kind of reflect back to you what I think I heard you say. I heard you say that funding through general stabilization, that is a possibility, I heard. And then I also heard you say, I don't know the exact words, but perhaps suggesting a combination of general stabilization. You said funding through the school committee-approved budget and through the council. Are you suggesting a collaborative approach? Did I hear that correctly? Is that what you were referring to?
You did hear that correctly, and I was referring to a partnering of the cost once the tentative agreement is reviewed and approved by the school committee, and finding out exactly what the cost will be and sharing the cost with the city council, identifying funds. So when we present a contract approved by the school committee, ratified by the collective bargaining unit, to the council, we have to identify the source of funds. The council at that time can reject those recommendations and go somewhere else if they would like, or they can accept the recommendation and seek the funds as presented.
Thank you, Mayor Martin. I saw Member Hollins, and then I saw Member Johnson.
I was just wondering if we have someone who came to speak to us from the City Budget Committee to explain the processes. He understands it if we could hear him.
Sure, we have Counselor Wheeler here. I did not specifically ask him to be prepared to comment on the processes he understands it. If you'd like to make any comments, Counselor Wheeler, you're more than welcome to. If not, that's okay, too.
I'll just, just as long as I came, I'll just speak for one second. And I just wanted, I do want to thank the school committee for inviting me because this doesn't form the conversation going forward, and I do think it's very helpful for me to be here as part of this conversation because, as you know, eventually this will get to council and... But louder? Louder, right.
Thanks.
But I can't speak for Ways and Means. I can't speak for council. I can't speak for city side. I did speak with the Finance Director Gilman today and get a sense of things, but without any numbers around where the contract's going to end up. And certainly, I don't know that. You know, it's not something that I can speak to, but I support working together, as Mayor Martin suggested we may have to do, between getting some funds from, whether it's general stabilization or whatnot on the city side, and some funds that may have to come from school side. Because as you can see from the numbers here, it doesn't look great, and the general stabilization needs to have a meaningful amount of money in there for a lot of reasons. But that's all I have to add, but thank you for inviting me.
Thank you. Yes, Member Hollins?
I have a question. Maybe the mayor, or you could answer it. The stabilization funds, city stabilization funds are funded... And this is a question, but I'm going to make a statement. You can tell me if it's right. At the end of the budget year, if there's any money that wasn't spent, then it's transferred to the stabilization fund. And that's how the stabilization funds get refilled at the end of the year, including one that was set up to support special ed. A very expensive student comes along, we can go to the city. So my understanding is that something happened at the meeting where the end-of-the-year budget... I'll call it excess. I don't know what the right word is. That meeting didn't happen where the money would get transferred into the stabilization, but there was that money, and it's somewhere. So my question is, is it correct that because it didn't get transferred within the time limit, it goes to free cash? And that at some later point in the year, it could go, but it's later in the year, it could come back up to city council to be transferred into the fund? So in my mind, the money to fund the fund was there. It just didn't get in the fund, but there's still that excess free cash at someplace. And that's my question. Where is it? And when's the next time that money could get into the fund? Thank you.
The mayor can probably jump in here, but yes, that matches my understanding, and I do apologize that my presence at the meeting to set the tax rate was not enough to allow for a quorum. But yes, my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mayor, is that that will be certified eventually in the process of certifying free cash, which happens yearly and is, you know, has a significant weight. But I would think that speaking purely as a council member, I would be inclined to approve looking at the $200,000 that would have been transferred as part of the interdepartmental transfer process that we were ready to sign off on had we had a quorum.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure that money didn't disappear. It's somewhere. It just didn't get into the right place.
It is somewhere.
Yes, and then Member Johnson?
And Counselor Wheeler is exactly right. So what happens during that period of time from July 15th, when it's the mandatory close of the year, what is done of the transfers is an internal budget transfer where deficit departments are getting money from other departments that didn't spend enough so that you end up with an equal-balanced budget at the midnight hour of the last day of the fiscal year. So when that didn't happen, then the process by law is that you have to then pay all the deficits with your next budget and put it into your next tax rate. And that's what moves up to, as Counselor Wheeler mentioned, we won't have those numbers. The end of the year should be finished by maybe the end of September, middle, end of October, middle of November, immediately brought to the council for end of the year, and we'll know exact numbers of free cash or any other funds, nonrecurring funds that the city had during the period of July 1st, 2018, to June 30th, 2019. Did I get that year right? Yeah. So that, it gets complicated dealing with calendar years and three budgets simultaneously, but this is, that's when we would have funds in addition to whatever we have existing and certified now. The other issue is that our certified funds won't be available until November. So using funds that are on with balances are okay, but we can't spend funds that are not certified yet. So some, that's why I'm suggesting that a partnership or agreement between the superintendent of Business, School Committee and Business School Manager, that we work with the Ways and Means and the council to come up with enough money to pay for an approved contract with this particular IA CBA.
Member, did you have a clarifying question? Member Johnson? Did I see another hand on this end? And then Katie? Member Johnson?
I think that you answered...
I think that Member Hollins asked my question, but I just, I, maybe I need you to explain it to me again. So in July, there wasn't a quorum, and so they weren't able to make the transfers, but the money was there. So I don't, I guess I don't understand, my understanding of the process is that the mayor can request transfers, and with a three-quarters vote of the council, those transfers can be made. And so it's not like we, I don't understand, is it, are we still waiting for some magic date? Isn't it possible to do the exact same thing, just using that process of having the mayor make a recommendation for a transfer and having the city council by three-quarters vote approve that?
Right, so we can't make the transfers because that year is closed. You can't do any more business in that year. The year we're in now, fiscal year '20, started July 1st. We can't make transfers now because we don't know what each department has spent or will overspend or will underspend to make those type of transfers. The existing accounts, the stabilization accounts, can be used. So the, obviously, the only one that has any money is the general stabilization of $1.9 million. Those funds can be used. In the past, the executive and the council have spent money out of stabilization funds and promised to replace those funds with future free cash monies. So I mean, that's very possible. We just don't think there's going to be a lot of free cash. We just don't think there's going to be a lot of free cash monies in this FY19 budget close of the year. Remember, that's already closed, you can't spend it. Because we had to cover, this is not easy. We had to cover a little over $400,000 in cuts from the previous council votes in 2018. So that has been covered in this budget in FY19. We've just had 776,000 cut out of the FY20 budget. At the end of the year, that's going to have to be covered, because what was cut was pension. You can't unfund pension, you have to pay it. What was cut was healthcare.
Mayor, thank you for answering my question, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
I'm just, I'm wondering, you know, if the, if, if essentially at July 15th, there was an awareness that this fund wasn't available, were there any contracts that were finalized after that point? Who kind of got the fund down? I mean, it seems like on an equitable basis, if you're looking at the fact that the funds haven't been transferred and that the contract stabilization fund is essentially going to be zeroed out, is it fair for other contracts to get ratified using that stabilization account and school committee contracts not to have that money available?
I believe we've funded maybe three contracts since July 1st, maybe, maybe since June 1st, I don't recall exactly. Two of them came from contract stabilization, and one came from general stabilization. I think they were all less than $40,000, maybe two in the twenties and one in the thirties. Thank you.
Member Karen.
I have just a couple of questions. Has this ever happened before? Have we ever gotten to contract stabilization to have a zero balance or this close, or we've had to figure out a different situation since it started?
Since 2012?
Yes.
No.
And then, so I know that we need to keep the general stabilization at a certain number to keep our good bond ratings and many other reasons. What is, what is the magic number? I know it's a percentage of a total, or I don't remember.
For the balance of the account?
For general stabilization.
General stabilization. The best practice is 6% of your operating budget?
6%? Thank you.
Member Hollins.
So I have a question, it's a budgeting question. I mean, there's a ton of information we're talking about, but in my mind, there was a pocket of money available at the end of the year. It didn't get transferred in time, so it goes into a different pathway to get certified by the auditors or accountants as free cash, and then something can happen with it, but that's going to be months away. And here's my, my question. If there was, at a meeting that didn't happen, an amount of money that's now on the free cash road, that was going to go into stabilization, and if we know that months from now when it turns into free cash, it might go into stabilization, here's my question. Is it possible, from an accounting point of view, that there could be a anticipation note, like a borrowing, so that if we know, let's say, six months, eight months, that money is going to finally be freed up to be transferred, can you do a revenue anticipation borrowing, which means we would just have to pay for interest? And get the money that's supposed to go into that account, and then when the money comes in, end it? Instead of just having to wait?
Yeah, I think you've asked a couple of questions. The, to borrow for operating is not a best practice. That's not a good process to do any type of budgeting, whether it's for the municipality or for yourself. The, the money that you're speaking of, whatever is left over, goes, when we didn't have that meeting to make the transfers, all of that year, FY19, consider it on a, on a spaceship outside the orbit of the earth. So it can't be touched until it gets the DOR and they certify it. Then that money becomes available, and it sprinkles all over the globe, all over the city of Greenfield. So then that's when we can use that. So if, if the county, the school committee was able to approve an agreeable contract with the CBA this evening, it couldn't get to the council until November, and it takes two readings, and so it would become an item to vote on by the city councillors in December. And so by December, we also have to do the tax rate, which is kind of the guillotine moment of time, where you have to have the end of the year previously totally finished, certified and approved. So then that money would be certified, it would be located in different accounts, and be able to be used by, by the council.
My question is, can you borrow in anticipation of all that time? And even though it's not a best practice, the situation we're in is not best practice either.
Yes. So what I heard the mayor say a few minutes ago was that funding through general stabilization is a possibility, and then replenishing general stabilization could occur. So that is one way to, at least in concept, kind of apply what, what you're saying. It's not exactly the same. It's not exactly the same. There may be multiple ways. I see Member Karen.
I just want to go back to process, because we've, all know this, right? We know the basics, the money's not there, we know we have to find it somewhere. I'm going to talk very generally, because I am very not allowed to talk about Unit C. So the general problem is we have no money for any contract that we would need to negotiate. So if we need to negotiate a contract, we need to ratify the contract, figure out how much money we need, and then go to the council with where we want it to come from. Correct? At this point, because...
I'm seeing the superintendent's hand, did you want to respond to her?
Well, I want to sort of add to that, and I think there's the problem. How can the committee, or the superintendent advising the committee, or the business manager advising the committee, enter into any negotiation with an unspecified amount of money available to us to negotiate a contract that may or may not have that pot of money available after we bring it forward? How can the school committee ratify that contract when the school committee doesn't know if that is or is not affecting the city's bond rating, the general stabilization? In other words, we're, we're operating in a total absence of clear financial data, and we are trying to do the right thing by employees. Funding employees below minimum wage is not best practice. And we know that we need people, there's a cost to the turnover of our employees, there's a cost to not being able to have good people in front of our kids, because people do leave. And the people that are here are great with our students, but we have difficulty finding them. So how can we continue to operate in a way that's fiscally responsible to the contracts and to future contracts? So setting aside this current anomaly that we're in, if we imagine that we found a, some under the couch cushions, we found some money and we were able to settle this contract, there is going to be the ongoing issue of every other contract that needs to be funded from the school department and from the city side. So I think what's sort of mystifying is, is there a change in practice? Is, is, has there been a directive to no longer access the contract stabilization fund, which has been in existence and was the directive that the superintendent and business manager and school committee were operating with this directive to access? If that has changed, when was that notification? What departments does it apply to? When did it go into effect? And how does the school committee respond to the people that it employs in a way that gives them assurance?
Sure, Mayor Martin.
There's no directive that I know of that has prohibited anyone from contributing to or using the contract stabilization fund. There is one clear, very clear direction in the charter. It's, it's under section 5.9 in the charter. It says that, "Personal liability for expenditures in excess of appropriations. No official of the town of Greenfield, except in the case of an emergency involving the health and safety of the people or their property, shall intentionally expend in any fiscal year any sum in excess of the appropriations duly made in accordance with law, nor involve the town in any contract for the future payment of money in excess of such appropriations." So as I mentioned earlier, the, the primary, the primary step we should be taking now is approving the school committee contract, I'm sorry, the school committee budget. Once that budget is approved, we will know how much money is there.
I have a clarifying question.
Yes.
I do have a copy of the charter, I can look at it myself, but what you just read to us really wouldn't apply to what's been practiced since 2012. So if that's something that we should be following specifically, it doesn't make sense. So what do you recommend?
Well, I think the, the point of that is that you don't spend money that you don't have. And so we have to identify the source of funds. I've said this in the past three months, we need to identify the source of funds. So once we identify the source of funds, we know we have. I think the negotiators in this, with this CBA made, had instructions from the school committee, which was the parameters by which you were negotiating, and I think you came in within those parameters. To the superintendent's point, we're looking for the source of funds. So I've made a couple of suggestions tonight. I haven't heard from the business manager, I haven't heard from the superintendent about a source. I've heard from the chair say that it's a possibility, working with the council, I've heard from the chairperson of the Ways and Means that it's possible to work with the school committee. So maybe that's the source of funds.
Okay. I do want to check in with committee members. Some folks expressed some time limitations for this evening. Are you, you're good on time? We do have at least one member that needs to leave just before 8:00 PM, and given the need for executive session conversation, I'm feeling that we may have exhausted this conversation at this point. We can continue to talk about specifics in executive session as it applies to the contracts that we've noted on our agenda. Are there any final questions for public session, any final comments for public session? Yes, Member Ekstrom.
So what I haven't heard discussed is what happens if we don't ratify this.
Yeah.
We haven't talked about that at all. If this, if we didn't...
Yeah, I think that would be executive session.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. This is specific to the funding of collective bargaining contracts. Do you have your hand up, Member Hollins? Okay. And then Member Johnson.
Can we take any action? So I'm going to make a motion that probably doesn't make sense, but I'd like to move that, I mean, we don't have a budget, we don't have a budget committee. I'd like to move that we investigate short-term borrowing to cover the amount that would have been in stabilization that we could access.
Pardon, can you repeat that?
I'd like to make a motion that we investigate short-term borrowing, a revenue anticipation note, for the amount of money that would have been available to us for contract.
Is that a request to the mayor to investigate, or the school department?
I don't know to whom it would go, it'd be someone at the city to clarify if it's allowable. But if it's allowable, that's my solution.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Member Ekstrom. Susan Farber, could you read back the motion to the group?
The motion is to investigate short-term borrowing for the amount of money that would have been available in stabilization, non-stabilization.
Yes, Member Karen.
Two things I'm going to abstain from this vote, because it gets too murky, and also I, in saying that, I question that there are many other options if we're going to pick one that's not best practice, it's not, shouldn't be our first choice.
Can you clarify what you mean by it's murky?
I'm, I have a parent in Unit C, so I'm not allowed to, and I don't want to accidentally look like I'm funding somebody and not somebody else, and so I'm just stepping back from conversations about funding specific contracts at this point in time. So.
Thank you, Member Karen. Yes, Mayor Martin.
I'd like to hear from the school business manager about the impact of borrowing, if possible, by the school committee, by the school department.
Sure. Yes, Superintendent.
Can I ask a question before, Steve's on his way up here? This is just clarifying. Is it accurate that several contracts with the city will be up and should be negotiating currently and will be up at the end of this year, including clerical and library, public works and SSEA associations? Are those contracts all expiring at the end of FY20?
That might be so, I'm not following that.
So, so I think, I'm just going to reiterate that the, the purpose of tonight's public discussion, as I understood it, was to clarify the process by which all city contracts are expected to continue from this point forward, if in fact there is an issue with the city's process for contract stabilization, which would impact the school department contracts and also all further city contracts. So I do want to underscore that the school department has and will continue to explore all avenues. At the same time, a process that's set in forth by the city should be equitable to all contracts executed within the city. And what's lacking for me is a clarity around what the city's new process is going to be if in fact contract stabilization is no longer available. So for those units that are currently bargaining on the city side, what is the source of funds that will be used? If they have access, for example, to general stabilization, the same ought to be applied to the school department, I would think. And that type of clarity around city process would be very helpful for us to stay within the charter. As you noted, our responsibility is not to expend funds that have not been appropriated. At the same time, we don't have clarity around what funds are available to school department and school committee employees.
Sure. So again, I don't know of any directive that's prohibiting or an equitable classification or clarification with all the departments and the collective bargaining units. So the contract stabilization fund is for that. As I mentioned earlier, when it was started, the intent was to fill that fund up on an annual basis to indicate that we would always have money for negotiations. And that would be, would be negotiating in good faith. The, the fact that it's down is because of a change not brought by the administration nor the school committee, a change in the process by which we were funneling and replenishing that fund. So yes, there would be and will be additional funds put in there. In this particular year, those funds won't happen till November. So everyone, all the collective bargaining that goes on, whether it's with the SSEA or the C or the whatever unit is going for funding for new contracts, will use the funds in the contract stabilization and other sources. So that's what happens, we identify those other sources if the contract stabilization is not fully, has not been fully replenished. I might say that the school department is a large department, the largest in the city. So when we have, when we have a collective bargaining agreement and a contract with funding for S or a C unit, it might be $24,000, $28,000. With this particular contract, it was somewhere in the vicinity of $500,000. It's a bit different. So we need to, we need to put in, not only in the equitable range of access to funds and contract stabilization, but also to realize that this is a different amount of money.
Hi, Steve, welcome.
Hi, how are you guys today? Forgive me for being late, I'm getting used to a new medication, so a little slow on the uptake. First of all, as you know, Mayor, the only, the, the school department alone cannot borrow. Only the city can, and only the city can work with state house bonds, revenue anticipation notes and bands. So it would be up to the city to do that type of borrowing, and ultimately up to the city council to do that type of borrowing. That being said, anytime you borrow, it's something that needs to be payback, and in this case, it's a more or less a revenue anticipation note, so your anticipation So you're anticipating the revenue coming in through free cash and then paying it off when that happens. So it's on a short-term basis. Because the city does have an excellent bond rating, which is due to, in part, the fact that they borrow very little, the interest and the fees will generally be lower than on type of a long-term type situation. So it really, it's up to the city to decide if this is how they want to exercise their borrowing authority and whether or not it fits in with that overall borrowing scheme of the city. Sure.
Member Johnson.
I really appreciate everyone who came and shared your stories. And you really opened yourselves up to us and shared details of the impact of working these such important jobs at such low wages has had on you. And thank you for sharing that so much. I think what you can see, hopefully you see from us, is that we negotiated and are, the negotiating team really wanted an improvement. And you ratified a contract that you felt good about, hopefully. And we're just suddenly surprised that the money that we thought was going to be there to fund it is not there. And now we need to find money from somewhere. And I just wanted to say that we want to accomplish all those things, improving pay, being fiscally responsible, and negotiating in good faith. And hopefully, we can figure that out.
Member Hollins.
If I'm not mistaken, there was a motion and a second to investigate short-term borrowing. And we asked the business manager to come up. And he says it is possible the city would have to do the borrowing. And I think my motion was that it be for the amount that would have gone into stabilization that now is going to be in outer space. So I'd like it if we could vote on that. And if we vote on that, at least it would go over to the city to see if they'll consider it.
Are there any other comments related to the motion? I see one superintendent.
I might suggest that the committee consider, or that member Hollins consider, entertaining a motion because the July meeting didn't have any figures relative to contracts that were, had tentative agreements. We are farther along in the negotiating process. So you might wish to consider updating those amounts to more accurately reflect contracts that you're anticipating based on information, including cost calculations that are now available that weren't available in July.
My only issue is trying to find the money that would have been in the account that we would have used, and just getting it soon. But I appreciate your comment. But I'd like to just take that money on a spaceship and get it into an account that we can use it.
Yes, member Ekstrom.
So I have what is probably a very basic question. So, we're asking, or the agreement has, has an amount that has, that would be distributed over time as people are paid. We're not asking for a balloon deposit of X amount because we have to spend it immediately. It's paid out over time.
So, the motion is...
That would have gone in the stabilization account.
Right, I understand that. But I'm trying to understand...
That's the only thing. How it gets from the account to anyplace else is a different issue.
Okay, so I want to belittle it a little bit. I think we get the idea behind member Hollins' motion. Can you repeat it back to us?
To investigate short-term borrowing for the amount of money that would have been available in, I guess we should say, the city's contract stabilization fund.
Member Hollins, would you entertain us, an amendment to your motion to modify the language to investigate short-term borrowing to support upcoming school committee contracts, rather than the amount anticipated to previously go into contract stabilization? In general, I'm just agreeing with the superintendent's point, which is that we have a bigger issue here. It's not just the school committee contracts, of course. That's the issue that's facing us at these tables. However, what I heard the mayor say was a general number about what he thought might have gone into contract stabilization. And it's possible that, that that amount is not enough to support the negotiating work that has been going on. So I think that we really should be looking for some flexibility in the amount that we may be wanting to borrow if we were to take that pathway.
What, what would the motion then say? Because I didn't have an amount of money in my motion.
Could you repeat that back?
To, the proposed change would say to investigate short-term borrowing to support upcoming school committee contracts.
Could I tell you why it doesn't feel right to me? And then I'll do what you think. Contract negotiation's ongoing. We're talking about contracts. We don't know what they're going to be, what the amount is. And by that time, contract stabilization may be refilled. I mean, there's time to work on other things. I am just, my motion was trying to find a solution for the situation, and we're right now with ed assistance and not complicated. If we find, my thinking would be, if we can find out that there is this avenue of short-term borrowing, which happens pretty quickly, then the school committee can activate other relationships with the city. So I was just looking for a solution to the current situation where the money didn't get where it needed to be. That's why I don't want to complicate it.
Okay, so that is a no. You don't want to, okay. Okay. Any final comments? Member Johnson, then Mayor Martin, and then I think we should vote.
I was just going to move to call the question.
Okay. Is there a second to call the question? Second, my member Ekstrom. We're voting right now to call the question. All those in favor of calling the question?
No.
No.
Aye. Who's a yes? All those in favor of calling the question? I saw two. Anyone opposed? I saw two. Any abstention? What was your vote? These two have to vote.
They both voted yes the first time.
Member Ekstrom, what is your vote?
I voted yes.
Okay, so that was three yeses. Member Hollins, what is your vote?
I will stand because I don't understand why people... People must have something important to say.
Okay, so three yeses, two no's, two abstentions. The motion carries. So, the motion carries. So we are voting on the motion on the table. Susan Farber, can you please read the motion to the committee?
To investigate short-term borrowing for the amount of money that would have been available in the city's contract stabilization fund.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed? Any abstentions? One abstention, motion carries. We will follow through with that. Thank you. I'm going to wrap us up a little bit and move into executive session. I want to express appreciation for everyone that came out this evening. As some members have noted, it's very important to hear from you, and we appreciate you coming out and sharing your stories. As well, Councilor Wheeler, thank you so much for coming. It's very important for everyone to be involved in this conversation. We appreciate your time and attention to this. Mayor Martin, also, committee members, thank you for engaging in this conversation. There is a lot more to be said here. There's a lot more to be said. There's a lot more to consider. As has been expressed this evening, it's not just the school committee contracts that we have before us. We have, also, the city will be entertaining contract negotiations in short time. So this is a very important consideration for the city of Greenfield. And I appreciate everyone coming to the table to discuss. Yes, superintendent.
I'd just like to thank all the instructional assistants, Unit C members. I really appreciate everybody that is here and everybody that's in our schools every day. You show up for our kids. And you hear it, and you know that we depend on you, and we appreciate you. I appreciate that you are all giving more time to be here tonight. And mostly, I appreciate that you're in classrooms with our students every single day. Thank you.
So at this time, committee members, Mayor Martin, Mayor Martin and member Hollins. So at this time, I'll entertain a motion to enter into executive session for, hold on, let me read the reasons. For reason number three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining for litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations for non-union personnel. Unit A, Unit C, cafeteria custodial litigation.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by member Hollins, seconded by member Ekstrom. Okay. We need to go into executive session? Member Ekstrom, can you, can you move us?
Yes.
We can take a five-minute recess before we go in there. Give us a roll call, please.
Number one?
Member one, yes.
Member Karen? Yes. Member Johnson?
Yeah.
Member Hollins?
Yes.
Mayor Martin?
Mayor Martin is a yes, and I am a yes.
We're all yes.
So it is 9:14 PM. We are back from executive session. And we do have one public vote to take. Susan Farber, if you could read the motion to us, please.
The motion is to approve the appointment of Dr. Janet Dickinson as interim director of people services at the additional per diem rate of $150, anticipating a length of term at two weeks, but allowing for extension of this agreement until the maximum of November 1st.
Thank you. All those in favor?
A motion.
I moved it. What do we have on our record?
Glenn moved it. And Katie seconded.
We need a second?
Second.
Second by member Ekstrom. Moved by member Johnson. Thank you for clarifying that. Okay. All those in favor? Aye. So that is unanimous. And is there a motion to adjourn?
There is.
Second.
Moved by Mayor Martin, seconded by member Johnson. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.